Here we are, 6:00 PM. And we have one more talker. And, hold on one second, there it is. Thank you all for coming today, we really appreciate the turnout. This is clearly an important topic to a lot of people, so that's one reason, obviously, or the reason why you're here tonight. I do want to tell you that if you don't want to stand up, there is extra seating and it's a live video feed in the Sutter Room. So those folks who would like to exercise that option, you walk out straight out these double doors, go into the double doors into City Hall, make a left, follow the windows all the way around, and there's a table and chairs and in there a video screen, so we can do that. May I have roll call, please ma'am?
Mayor Harris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardoza?
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden?
Here.
Councilmember Spandola?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Alright, we have two items on closed session, that's going to be after all this, and we have a, this doesn't have, ma'am, do we have the presentation by city staff and Gap folks, ready to go?
I know we have the presentation by city staff, and I believe that the presentation has been given to staff for the FRAC folks.
We have both, thank you.
We have both?
Yes.
Alright, so I'm gonna write this in here. That's just part underneath the workshop part? Alright. And may I ask Mayor Cardo everyone to stand and please lead us in the pledge.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A lot of people are gonna get to talk today, which is a good thing. Are we, have you squared away the speaking for some people? Yes, like we talked about the other day? Okay, usually typically what we do to avoid being here all night, if folks have the same message, we ask them to consolidate it and appoint a speaker, we talked about this the other day, yes ma'am? Okay, are there those folks in here? Or do you know? It's not, so it's not duplicated? Oh, you're gonna be squared, okay. Did you do a card? Okay, you know the routine, I'm assuming. Three-time mayor right here, former mayor, that's why I'm doing that. Absolutely. How did I know? Anybody else? You're working on it? Alright, just go that way. Alright, so tonight is the Gauche Aquatic Park Workshop, we're looking forward to discussing this item, we weren't able to talk about it at our last meeting, it came up, but now we can, okay? Keep in mind when folks come up, and you're, again, you're more than welcome to do so, as was stated, it's perfectly your right to do so, we want to hear from you. We do have a three-minute limit, okay? So, so when you do come up, please, please pay attention to the lights, when it goes red, that's when you're done, even if it's mid-sentence. So if you've prepared a long thing to read, I hope you timed yourself, I'm not gonna be rude, but I am gonna cut you off, because we need to, we need to make sure we keep this process going, it's gonna be a lot of it here, okay? So manage your time wisely, and we will be happy to hear from you there. So, we're gonna begin with, let's see... Does anybody, member of the public want to address the city council on items in closed session, we're gonna be talking about tonight? Which is real property negotiator for Pool Boulevard and a lot over here, and also on, you don't have anything about that. Anybody? Okay, so let's move on with staff presentation. Do we have city attorney on speaker? Good evening, Mayor. You know, Brad, forgive me for interrupting, but I'm gonna take an opportunity right now, before we get fully started, I want to recognize any of the lifeguards that may be here, and even some that aren't, in fact, all of them that were participating in the rescue on the unfortunate occasion we had at the Gap Saturday before last, where we had a gentleman had a heart issue, and these lifeguards, and I'm gonna ask you to stand up in a second. They stepped in, their training kicked in, and they're, we're talking teenagers here. Some of us have been around a while, we've done CPR a lot, but this might be the first time they've ever had occasion to do that, and although it did not necessarily work out the way that we all would want it to, they nevertheless stepped up, they gave 110% effort, followed their training, and they did what needed to be done, and I think that's just outstanding, outstanding, very, very proud of you. Are any of those lifeguards here today? If so, please stand up. There they are, right there. That's very good, and you know, that, those things come, and they kind of sneak up on you, it was a very significant event in your life, and I guarantee you'll probably never forget it, but, I don't want to get too personal in front of a thousand people here, but you know, those types of things can sneak up on you, and we do have help, you know, for you, to help you process it, because it's a lot of stuff to go through, especially your age, but you guys are true heroes, and we're very, very proud of you, on behalf of the entire city, so thank you very much.
So Mayor, with that, I'd also like to recognize Sharon and Ann, they did, both did an amazing job. I was on-site when staff, when it was told to staff, and we did a brief with the kids, and Sharon said some awesome words, as did Ann. It was an amazing job, so, thank you.
Alright.
So here we are, so I am Brad McIntyre, your community services director, and before we get going, there's two staff members I want to introduce as well, I'm just anticipating that I may need their help as a variety of questions possibly, but I'd like to first introduce Matt Langley, he is our parks superintendent, he manages all of our parks. And then we have Ann Gillan, who is our aquatic supervisor, and has been with us a very long time, she has pretty much run all of our programs throughout her tenure with the city, so. So per council's directive, a couple weeks ago, we're here to discuss the pool closure as of right now, from September to January. Go ahead and go with our first slide. To give you an idea of, this slide is to give you an idea of the programs that take place during this time, which is right there, the number of participants for the last three years, the program days, time, and the average cost typically. One of the first questions that, I'm just gonna try to answer questions as we go along, as I've heard questions come up, the first one on this slide typically would be, why is there such a range here? It typically depends on how many Tuesdays and Thursdays there are in the month, so that's why you see that range. So for our water aerobics, you can see the numbers for the last three years, our master swim, lap swim, those are the numbers for the last three years, our polar bear plunge, excuse me, those are the three, and those are our recreation programs, that is sponsored by the city, and then we have a contract, which is the Feather River Aquatic Club. These are approximate numbers, so if you look at the numbers, they stay fairly consistent. The hours, I put approximately, because at times if you look at their schedule, that's online, the last two months, they average hour and a half to two to three hours, so I went just an average. They, and this is gonna be a little bit redundant later down the road, but the fee that FRAC charges per the contract is $2,650. So I've broken this into two different categories, really it's the off-season, which is not necessarily always defined as off-season, that's what I'm calling it for this slide, and then we've got the on-season. Again, it is a three-year look, it is giving you the expenditures, the revenue, and then the net loss during that timeframe, and then you've got the exact same expenditures, revenue, and the net for that timeframe, for the last three years. Eighteen, nineteen is not on there, because the books have not been closed, one, bills still come in, it takes finance to about a month and a half, two months to pay those, and then we have the auditors come in, so these are audited numbers from our auditors. It's important to understand, just to clarify, that these numbers right here, on a yearly basis, as it relates to expenditures, it does not include the debt service of $650,000 per year for, to build the aquatic complex. That $650,000, just to make sure we're on the same page, it includes the aquatic complex and the park.
Brad, would you mind if you just explain what debt service means, some folks might not understand?
Best, best way I did, that I, for a simple guy like me, is just, it's your credit card bill. So we took a loan out, and the aquatic complex costs roughly $16.1 million, and this is what we pay on that debt every year. I think one of the good questions come up is, and I've heard it in roundabout ways, is, you know, what has the city done to help offset costs? And the answer is, is that in 2015, we did all these things as related to energy efficiency improvements. If anybody that knows anything about a pool, you know that you're going to run the filter a lot, it's going to cost a lot in chemicals, if you have a pool in the winter and you utilize it, the heat costs a lot. So, the reason why I wanted to show this, is that, one, in 2015, that this is where all the, solar, thank you, want to come up? The solar, and then also on top of the building, as well. So there's been a lot of questions about, well, what does a closure look like? A closure looks like, and I've got one thing that I want to make sure I add on this, so I don't forget. So when we talk about a closure, first of all, we need to understand that there are three pools at Gauche Aquatic Park. We have the zero-death entry pool, which is the play feature, for the most part, and that's where we also do some swim lessons, and then you've got the pool that is for the slide, where the kids come off the slide, and those are separated, and then of course you have the competitive pool. So when we talk about draining the pools, during the closure, it would be, we would drain the slide pool and the zero-death entry pool. We do, we do this every year, there's, there'd be no change to that. We would not, we would not empty the competitive pool, for a variety of reasons, but probably the biggest reason is that with the pounds per pressure, it would, or could, damage the structure of the pool, so we would not drain that pool. We would also cover, but not heat, the competitive pool. We'd run the filters in the competitive pool as needed, meaning that we're gonna evaluate it with staff, we will have parks staff still on-site throughout the day, or sporadically, checking that, because I guess the best way to put it is that the pool would not go black. And that's kind of what that statement's about, also. And then the other thing that I probably should have put up here is that, we are, we are going to keep the cover on that pool as much as we can. In the winter, obviously, you lose just heat naturally, but it would not be, it would not be heated, but I want to make sure everyone understood the importance of covering the pool, as well. Next. So the, I just want to give you a rundown on our contract with FRAC. Again, as I said earlier, it's not a city-run program, the city has contracted FRAC to utilize the Gap, the contract expired in December of 2017, they are charged $2,650 per month, and then if they have anything over four, anything over 60, then they pay $40 for each additional swimmer. To my knowledge, they've never gone over the number of 60, so they've never had to implement the $40 additional cost. As I said earlier, FRAC utilizes the pool approximately three hours, Monday through Friday, with occasional Saturdays throughout the year. The monthly contract also includes one free swim meet typically on a Saturday, and I want to say typically it's in February. So the options that you have here, that is to keep the Gap open year-round, close the Gap September through January, as is right now, and close the Gap for a shorter period of time. There's gonna be a lot of things discussed tonight, staff, and specifically myself, is that depending on what council decides to do, or are not making any choices, if they decide to go with this one, I would encourage to give us 30 days, because specifically the plan for the competitive pool is that we need to replace five filters specifically for the competitive pool, and we need to do that this year, so, just, that's just a piece of information. Take any questions at this time, or we can certainly listen to FRAC's presentation?
Through the mayor. Brad, the filters, are they replaced every year?
No, the filters, I believe they are replaced, they're supposed to be replaced every 10 years, but we are on our 12th year.
Okay, and if council made a decision to shut the pool, say from Thanksgiving to January 1st, would that be an inconvenience on our FRAC folks?
I'm sure they will let you know that, here in a little bit.
Okay, I'm sure you will, yeah, okay. That's good for me, at this time, thank you.
Through the mayor. Brad, so, just for clarity, how many, how many times have you had a closure or an off-season before in the, is it, did it start on 15, 16, was that the first time that you started doing the off-season or closure?
Last year, last year was the first year that I closed it for a year, or, closed it for, go ahead. Closed it for a month. And the question that, I'm glad you asked that question, so the reason why was, really for two reasons, one was bigger than the other reason. One, it was, again, some maintenance issues, but, but I've been in this position as director for the city now, for just a little over 15 years, and in my 15 years, our budget goes up and down with the economy, and I know that, I'm not an economist, but I know that the economy's probably going to go a different direction here at some point, and I will be asked at that point to make tough decisions and tough recommendations for the council to consider, and so I know that's going to happen, I just, I do believe that unfortunately, and that's just a reality of life. And the reason why I did that, is that I need to have a base number, I can project numbers all day long, but at the end of the day, I wanted something real, and that was my opportunity to, just to test it. It was not this master plan of going one step to the next step, I'm not trying to phase this in. They are separate, I understand that people may not feel that I'm telling the truth, I guess, just quite put it out there, but that, that is the intent. When we did save, when we did close it for that time period, the, right around, roughly, we saved about $8,000. So then the question is, so we come up with the seven months at $8,000, that's how we got to around $56,000 of savings, but I also know that there are going to be costs that I cannot predict. Example would be, there's no doubt that that facility's gonna have to have a higher security presence, even though our parks staff will not be there, you know, all day, every day, because they will not, we don't have the staff to do that, but I do understand that there could be some things come up that I can't predict, so I always went safe and, so, I'm kind of going rambling on, but that's the answer.
No, no, I appreciate that, and then, part of the other expenditure that, and, can you go to the financial comparison slide, please?
Go back?
Yes, please. I know Judy can do that. Thanks. So, last year was when you did the first trial, I would say, kind of a test, was that 16, 17, or 17, 18?
No, so that, that would not be, that would be right there, but those are the numbers that we have not, have not been audited yet.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to make sure that it was clear.
Yeah, so, so the number I just gave you does not represent anything on that chart, it'd go right there.
Okay.
Yes, but the fiscal year 18, 19.
Yeah, the fiscal year 18, 19, though, okay. So those other years, no changes in scheduling?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And then, the, the city, which includes all of us, so a bond was passed years ago to develop that area that we have right now, is that accurate?
That is accurate, and I, you know, we, Mrs. Langley, you want to kind of fill the rest in, as far as the redevelopment funds and that story?
Sure. So the, when the bonds were originally sold for the development of Gap, not the aquatic park as well as the park, we had the redevelopment agency at the time, and so the repayment was to be funded through RDA money, as well as I believe impact fee money, so when the RDA went away, then that had to be backfilled with general fund money.
Okay, so, and that time, it cost maybe about 16 million or so?
The cost of the facility and the park was 16.1 million.
Okay, so at this point, that bond in particular doesn't expire until 2036? And the...
Yes, that's correct, I'm sorry. I was gonna say 2039, but I think it's 2036.
Yeah, 2036, and so we have an outstanding about eight million plus to still repay on that, as a city.
Correct.
And so we, that's that $650,000 that we pay every year to continue the facility, to have that facility open, so to, so I just want to share that additional information, so I'll ask the community to hear that our city, long ago, began this journey where we're at now, and I'm, I think it's an important investment for our community. Also, be aware that every year, we were paying that $650,000 annually, on top of the other expenditures, but how do we qualify it, you know, is it worth or not worth, when we have hundreds, particularly maybe thousands of people utilizing, but I'm not sure the numbers of how many people are using the facility, because the park is sep, is connect, I've been there plenty of times, so the park is a beautiful part of this $16 million investment, and then the pool is where we only charge, do we charge for the park use?
The only thing we charge for the park use is for barbecues, rental space.
Okay, so, how many people usually use the pool annually?
Annually, I would say it's going to be 30 to 35,000. I can tell you specifically that in the last two months, we've had 27,874 participants, this is not counting this last weekend, for swim lessons, we've done 1,222, for our tot time, 278, and for our twilight swim, it's 466, for a total of 29,840 people have come through the door at Gauche Aquatic Park in the last two months. It is, it is very well-used, and it is an amazing asset. I would like to draw attention to the swim lessons specifically, because I think it adds a huge benefit to our community with the river, and river being so close, so.
Okay, thank you, I'm good now, thanks.
Through the mayor, Brad, can you, can you elaborate on the terms of the previous contracts with FRAC? Were they annual, were they multi-year?
It was a year-to-year contract, and as you can see, the contract expired in 2017. Quite honestly, I dropped the ball, and FRAC never approaches, if I'm aware, about renewing the contract, or to update the contract.
And typically, do, I don't know how much history you have with those contracts, but were there increases on an annual basis, or were they pretty much the same year-to-year?
So, reviewing some past contracts, I would say that it increased, since we opened, by the way, FRAC has been a part of renting the space, I would say maybe it's increased three times, and not very much.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor. Going back to my fellow councilmembers' comments, and I want to recognize our former mayor right here, who embarked on building this park, is a great asset for the city, but the $16 million cost was something that you as a mayor could not anticipate, the last governor taking those funds away, and that $650,000 that comes out of the general fund every year is less safety for our community, that's less police officers, firefighters, that's less in fixing the roads, that is, comes right out of that general fund. So, just wanted everyone to be aware of that, this is a beautiful asset, and we are stuck with $650,000 a year, but you could not foresee that when the park was built. So, with that, I just wanted to bring that point up, to make sure everybody understood where those funds came from, and it does take away from other things in the city.
My question's about the contract expire, and you've already answered that, how we got to that point, that's, I'm not gonna belabor that, but nothing else? Alright, thank you very much. I don't know if it's Holly, or...
Both of you, alright.
Thank you, members of the city council, for scheduling this special meeting. My name is Holly Stout, and I'd like to give you a little bit of information about myself before I turn this over to Sharon Guillory. First, I have a bachelor's degree in government from Claremont McKenna College, and a JD from the University of San Diego School of Law. I also have a master's of law degree from Vermont Law School, and I've been a practicing attorney for over 20 years. I'm currently a senior staff counsel for a California State Agency, and I'm a counsel for a California Water, California Commission. I work on multi-billion dollar programs. Most importantly, though, I'm the mom of three FRAC swimmers. Unfortunately, my eldest couldn't be here tonight, he's off swimming in the Virgin Islands, which would not have been possible without FRAC. So, I'm going to turn this over to Sharon Guillory, who's our board president and coach of FRAC, and she's going to explain what exactly Gauche Aquatic Park brings to this community, and then she's gonna turn it back over to me, and I'm going to address some of the concerns that we have heard from the city council.
When Gauche Aquatic Park first opened back in 2008, it was clearly supported by the city and our community, as demonstrated in the quote that you see popping up here from our current community services...
that you see popping up here from our current community services director. Um, I was asked by someone that I met with last week, um, what does Gap bring to our community? Many people think of our pool as just a place for recreation, but in reality, it's so much more than that. Our community derives many benefits from having a public pool. Sure, we use the pool as a way to cool off during a hot summer day, but we use it year-round for several other reasons. We use it for exercise, like senior aerobics. We use it for educational purposes, like lifeguard training or learning how to swim. We use it for our high school swimmers. We use it to train for the swimming portion of a triathlon. We use it to serve the needs of people suffering from medical conditions, and we use it to operate a year-round competitive swim team. Our pool gives us the opportunity to have aerobic low-impact exercise, and our pool increases safety in our community. Um, I'll give you an example of that. No one dies from not knowing how to play basketball. Swimming, unlike any other sport, is also a life-saving skill that every single one of us should have. Socializing with different groups helps our community come together for a common goal. Our pool brings diverse groups of people together to play and to exercise. Everyone are in our community has the opportunity to swim, and most importantly, Gap gives all of us the means to a healthier and happier lifestyle. In the senior water aerobics class that I teach, many of the participants have health conditions that prohibit them from exercising in a gym. The water is easy on their joints, and it gives them mobility that is otherwise limited. Our class is a beautiful mix of quilters, librarians, grandmothers, and even retired politicians. For many of them, this is their only social outlet. Our master swimmers are also an amazing group of people. They actively compete and represent our city, and they represent it well. They are encouraging to our youth, and they are such a positive asset to our community. A few weeks ago, I was complaining that FRAC didn't have enough kickboards for all of our kids. The kickboards we had were worn, broken, or they were just missing altogether. Three of the master swimmers overheard that conversation, and within a week later, I was sitting at the front desk at Gap. UPS guy brought in a box, two huge boxes full of kickboards for all of our kids. Um, I don't know about triathlons, but I've certainly learned a lot about the people that complete them. The Yuba Sutter Tri Club members quite often use Gap as a place to train. There is one triathlete in particular that I refer to as the Gladiator. Because she is such an inspiration to everyone at Gap who meets her, she motivates the people around her in a way that I've never seen, and hearing Yuba City called out as these triathletes cross their finish lines in whatever city they travel to is also a pretty special thing. And then there is FRAC. FRAC, a team of kids ages five to eighteen. It is a place where we encourage self-esteem, sportsmanship, and health and wellness. It is a place where children can be themselves, whether they're the fastest or the slowest. They have a place and they are valued. FRAC provides an opportunity for kids that might struggle in other sports, but it also gives opportunity for athletes who have big dreams. It is such a positive atmosphere, and I invite every single one of you to come check out what we're all about. As I said before, one of the great things about having a community pool is that it brings so many different groups together. We become a family, and the best part is that anyone in our community can join that family. The lifeguards get to know our swimmers. The swimmers call our lifeguards by name, and the lifeguards make them feel safe. Our master swimmers help build the skill of our lap swimmers and are always eager to share their knowledge. Our triathletes teach us about their sport, and our seniors give us such love and sometimes a little bit of sass too. Gap is a true treasure in our community, and shutting it down for five months is just not the answer. Um, just to touch on training and safety just a little bit, in order to have all of our wonderful programs at Gap, trained and certified lifeguards are required. Um, I believe someone else is gonna speak about that further in a little bit, but I just want you to know that the lifeguards at Gap are a group of bright, caring, and wonderful people. Um, I'm gonna turn things back over to Holly so that she can uh discuss some of the budget issue issues that city council would like addressed. And council, thank you so much for your time this evening, I appreciate it.
So, I thought it would make sense to go over a little bit of what we've heard through our meetings with city staff and with city council to explain why the city opted to close the facility for five months out of the year. First, there's an operating loss of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Next, the city should be breaking even on the operation of Gap. In theory, lots of money could be saved by closing the park. Finally, lots of different budget cuts were made, and this was just one in a long list. However, the city does prioritize parks in other ways. Many of you were present at the opening of the pickleball courts in San Brandon Park, which cost the city approximately ninety thousand dollars with no anticipated return on investment. Incidentally, parks maintenance for all of the city parks costs approximately one point four million dollars per year, while park reservations account for only eleven thousand dollars of revenue. The city's budget actually projects revenues of a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars from the swimming pool, more than the previous year, but does not account for the fact that if you close it for five months, FRAC will go away. The city is not a business and clearly subsidizes many community service functions. In short, generating revenue is not a purpose of the parks. With all of this in mind, we reviewed the proposed operating budget numbers back to twenty fifteen to get a sense of the city's financial picture. The city's general fund expenditures have kept pace with its increased revenue, and they are, and the city is expending less money than what is coming in in revenues. By doing that, they've als- they are also operating with a six point four million dollar reserve in the general fund, and this year it increased to six point eight million dollars because of a surplus of more than four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Incidentally, for fiscal year nineteen twenty, the city increased the budget thirty-five times with departments or divisions with salaried personnel receiving in, with twenty-five departments or divisions with salaried personnel receiving increases. This is the list of all of the departments with personnel that received a year-over-year budget increase. This is the graphical representation of all of the departments with employees that received an increased budget. Overall, more than thirty percent of the increases went to police and fire, while nearly forty percent went to wastewater treatment. Conversely, this is the list of divisions with salaried personnel that received budget cuts. Overall, there were a total of ten budget cuts, with seven of those coming from salaried personnel departments. And this chart shows the portion of the budget cuts borne by each division. I think it's important to note how each cut was achieved. The city council actually had a thirty-two point one percent cut in your own budget. That cut came primarily from a reduction in benefits paid to the city council members. The legislative and administrative office, this cut seems to have resulted from shifting some salaries and benefits to supplies and services, likely outside professionals for reduced cost. And I'm just guessing at some of this because I was just taking it from what's on the website. The city clerk cut the budget by cutting professional services and increasing extra help hiring. Fire administration saved money by reducing salaries and wages of the administration department, and it should be noted that that portion is a point two percent of the fire administration budget. The crime analysis and intelligence division saved nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars primarily by reducing its telephone usage. Electrical maintenance saved money by reducing the operation and maintenance on vehicles. The senior center saved money by reducing the buildings and facilities and operations and maintenance. And then there's the aquatics. It took a thirty-two point zero five percent hit from the budget cuts. Thirty-two percent of all of the budget cuts were based, were to the aquatics department. And that primarily comes from turning off the heat and power for five months out of the year and shutting it down. No other department's cuts resulted in a lack of services to the public or loss of a program. In light of these revelations, and to ensure we were not requesting the city take money from other departments, recognizing that there are other needs, we reviewed the budget of the community services department for the last five years. We found that the administration-recreation supervision budgets have increased forty-one point five percent and forty-four point zero one percent respectively over the last five years, primarily in salary and benefit increases. We also found the parks maintenance budget allocation has increased thirty percent over the past five budget years, with all of those increases coming from increased salaries. Meanwhile, recreation programs which directly serve the community were cut an overall nine point six percent over the last five years with a truly draconian cut in fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen of seventeen point nine percent. Finally, we found that the aquatics expenditures total over the last five years is an eleven point seven percent decrease. The only reason for the slight increase that you see between seventeen and eighteen and eighteen nineteen is because the minimum wage went up. This difference is clearly shown here with the chart of the salaries and the supplies and services. The city has consistently cut funds from the operating budget of Gap over the last five years. It appears this year, the pound of flesh from the pool means the closure of the pool for five months. The conclusions to be drawn from these budget choices are unhappy. The community services department has consistently increased salaries and benefits for the administration and supervision while cutting services to city citizens. The department has implemented more severe cuts on the aquatics facility to make up the difference so it can continue to pay increased salaries and benefits to the administration and supervision staff. This is an affront to the purpose of the department. Now, when we first heard about this closure a couple of weeks ago, and it became clear that the city was going to schedule this meeting, I did make a Public Records Act request asking for any analysis of the costs and revenues of Gauche Aquatic Park, remembering that it was closed a month ago. Some of those documents came in last week, and so I've recreated one of the charts that they have there. These records show that the operating loss designated by program as opposed to on an annual strange monthly basis shows that actually pool admissions are the lost leader here at nearly a hundred thousand dollars. Gap, in general, is losing money, that's true. The only two programs that are there that make money are swimming lessons and FRAC. The savings from last year's shutdown, as you just heard Mr. McIntyre say, were approximately eight thousand dollars. However, I would suggest that December is an awfully cold month to base any sort of shutdown on. You're talking about closing it September, October, November, and December. September and October are still historically warm. It would be, I think, not a good idea to extrapolate the savings from December to September and October. When you include the fact that you're going to lose twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of revenues from FRAC, it's difficult to see how this makes any sense. There's also still a lot of information that hasn't been disclosed. City staff has not explained how much the facility will continue to cost if it is closed for those five months to everyone else, or how much will be saved. City staff has not explained how it determined that the losses occur over those five months of the calendar year, and we would actually argue that those losses occur over the entire year because the pool operates all year. And as the data from the city actually shows, the general admissions are what's, are the lost leader. Even assuming it's true, most businesses do not make money year-round but remain open because the cost of hiring and training on a seasonal basis is higher. Whichever part of the budget for Gap contains June, July, and August is likely to be the part that shows positive re- revenues. That's the nature of a seasonal facility. It does not necessarily follow that this, that it needs to be shuttered for part of the year. Closing Gap will eliminate one of the two programs with positive revenue stream. FRAC paid the city twenty-eight thousand dollars last year, which is more than a cost to run the program, as you've already seen. Others who use the facility will find an alternative place to swim and will not be back. And no one has explained what will happen to the employees during those five months. So, we have four requests. First, keep the pool open year-round as it was intended when it was constructed. It does not make sense to have a sixteen million dollar facility sitting empty for nearly half the year. Next, agendize a supplemental budget appropriation memorializing this decision and bring Gap back up to the appropriate budget amount. My rough estimate says it's about fifty thousand dollars. Also, direct the incoming city manager to negotiate a new, new contract with Feather River Aquatic Club to ensure stability in the club. And finally, consider adding off-season programming to increase revenues. We've seen through all of this that swim lessons bring in money. Why not do that all year-round? That's certainly a better option than closing it to everyone in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Can you bring that back to council for any comment? Nothing? Nothing at this time? All right, so go ahead.
Uh, to the mayor, um, we don't have the opportunity to ask you direct questions to the presenters.
Yeah?
So if you can go back to the podium, that would be good, thanks. Um, thank you so much for compiling um, a quite extensive um, overview of the project that um, we all share in, in the decision that we make here. And we just received your PowerPoint like an hour, what, thirty minutes, four, twenty minutes ago?
Yeah, I was, I've been learning PowerPoint all of the last week.
I, it's hard, it's not easy, especially when you're doing all these charts.
I should also let you know that attached to the back of that are the public records that I received from the city, so.
I was gonna ask you if that's what the public records were, okay. Because um, to pro- to do a fair analysis of this, you know, it takes a little bit of time to digest all the information. Um, so my first question is, um, it's not clear to me, because normally when I'm looking at something, where you reference your data from, because the-
It's the city's proposed budget online.
Okay, the proposed budget online?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, usually we have our finance person here as well, and she's not here to be able to, to look at this and say that's a fair number or not, you know?
I will say, those are the numbers that are online. That's all I used and-
And and I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying that. Um, usually, you know, because she's the expert with our budgets, and she handles that information really well. So the budget increases that you mentioned, um, I don't have all those memorized, to be honest with you. So I don't know if this is all accurate or based again on what you found on our website.
So I took those, I did some math, which admittedly is hard as a lawyer, um, but-
And I understand that, but we also have an amazing uh finance person who keeps the track of this for us too, so. But that- The, I didn't get the PowerPoint until about- Because um, I didn't know that this was-
We're not gonna engage with the audience. We just, what, what, at the podium, there's a valid question?
He's gotta keep me in check here, folks. So it's, it is, so I just don't know if these are, I'm asking just, and I'll check with our finance people, okay? Just to help make sure that I'm on track correctly. Um, so when you talk about the percentages of budget increase, increase, increase by division, you know, some of these are very, some of these monies are tied to those particular projects. We don't have uh allowances to make moves on some of those finances, you know that?
So this was all general fund, which is completely within your discretion.
Got it, okay. All right, so, I just wanna say I, I got it like thirty minutes ago, so I don't have a chance to really process all of this. So, thank you for that.
All right, thank you, ladies. Yeah, so the budget process is very complicated, that's for sure. There's some, I know there's many ways the, the numbers it might look, especially in a, in a certain form where we're on for a particular purpose that um, perhaps aquatics is targeted, but there are many, many complicated reasons why decisions are made. But um, the numbers are the numbers, you got it directly from the website, there it is, so.
Yep.
We are here to discuss that right now. We heard you loud and clear, and I believe we have one comment here. Oh, you're just, oh, okay, I thought you were gonna say something. Oh, right here, go ahead.
Yep, through the mayor. Uh, like I asked Mr. McIntyre a little bit earlier, uh, just throwing it out there, not saying it's, it's gonna happen or not like that. If the gap was closed between Thanksgiving and New Year's, would that be an inconvenience on your FRAC swimmers?
It's absolutely an inconvenience on our FRAC swimmers. Um, we have swimmers, some that are very serious. Um, myself and another coach, we actually run, um, we coach at River Valley High School and Marysville High School as well. That season begins in February when they have their first meet. You pull them out of the water from Thanksgiving to January, that is crucial- You pull them out of the water from Thanksgiving to January, that is crucial training time for those kids. And we have several kids that aspire to go on and swim in college, and if they're not in that pool twelve months out of the year, that's, I mean, that it's taking that opportunity away. We also have our biggest fundraiser to fund our team the first week in February. If we aren't training, which is what happened to us last year, we we took a big hit on that. We don't have as many kids. We don't bring in as much money. We can't be as prepared as we'd like to be. And we certainly can't be competitive against the other teams, and we bring over eleven hundred people to that meet in February that come from different areas, stay in local hotels, always bragging about how beautiful Gauche Aquatic Park is. And so, yes, it is absolutely a detriment to our team to pull us out from Thanksgiving to January.
And then another question I have for you folks is, your team meet, the meet you have in February, do those folks contribute towards you folks to help?
They do. When you, we are, we are governed under USA Swimming. And so, a portion of every entry, so we have entry fees. Swimmers will come and pay an entry fee as far as the particular race. It's not an admission fee. It's kind of hard to explain. And a large portion of that money goes toward the travel fund. That USA Swimming collects that money, and then we end up getting about half of those entry fees. And that money pays for about four months of our water cost because we don't make enough from our dues alone. So, that actual event is very important to us sustaining ourselves for the year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Through the mayor, thank you for the presentation. I know that took some work to put together. The question I have is, there are other pools in the area, and I'm certainly not suggesting that ours is gonna be unavailable. But how would that factor in if we had to close for a month or two? Could you strike an arrangement with somebody else for that period of time?
So, I will tell you, I was not present. There was a meeting between, I believe, Brad and Cindy Shatswell from Yuba City Racket Club. I was not told that that meeting was happening. They had that without, I I learned after the fact. And I believe they were offering two to three lanes between seven to nine PM at night, and there was a possibility between six to eight. But that pool is three and a half feet deep. I am huge on water safety, and I will not put my swimmers in a situation that I feel is unsafe. They cannot dive in three and a half feet water. If they're not diving, they can't, I mean, when you go to a meet, the very first part of a race is the dive. It's one of the very most important parts. If you don't, if you can't practice that and you can't, we cannot train. It would be like if you had a basketball team and you put them on an outside court with a bunch of holes with a non-regulation-sized ball and basketball hoop. The pools are also not quite a full twenty-five yards, which also presents a problem. We can't even get accurate times for our swimmers. And putting sixty kids in a couple of lanes, it just doesn't work. It's not even a productive workout. If you have twenty kids, let's let's say best-case scenario, we would, we were giving, we were given three lanes, which I really don't believe would happen because people pay a lot of money to belong at Racket Club. I've heard from some of the members themselves, they would not really be privy to the idea of having a bunch of little kids in their pool when they're trying to have a workout. It can't be productive. Twenty kids trying to swim in a lane, it's not safe and it's not productive. So, that is why that's not a possibility for us. I also believe that our community deserves our pool. You know, that the city funded that project for us, all of us, all of us, and we should be able to use it. And and I just, I feel pretty strongly about that.
Thank you.
Were you talking the pool, just for my information, the pool at the club on Jones or Rancho Cortez, or both of them are the same?
I was told it was regarding the the one on Jones, the indoor pool.
Indoor pool. And if I, I've only been there a couple of times, but they also don't have the miniature, and I don't know the term,
The diving blocks.
The miniature diving block. They don't have that either. Is that correct?
Right, and the interesting thing about that is during the meeting that I was not present at, I was told that they were going to look into diving blocks for that pool. I highly suggest that they do not look into that because you cannot dive into three and a half feet water safely.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Shaw?
Uh, through the mayor. Thanks for being here tonight. A couple of questions for you. First of all, the February meet, looking back in history, that has been held at different times of the year.
Yes.
And so, it could actually be moved to a later time as it used to be held in June, and you would very likely get more participants because more people are training. It gives more opportunities. So, February is not, you know, locked in completely. It could be moved, correct?
Well, it actually was moved because Mr. McIntyre took my summer month from me, and I had to put it in a winter month because they felt that it was taking away from the revenue of public swim and the snack bar and things like that. So, the bidding process is also not a simple one. We have to put in the bid a year prior. The window for 2020 is already gone, and we are in huge jeopardy of not even having a meet because those, that information was due July fifteenth. I found out about this closure through a voicemail on July eleventh. I am certain that our local swim committee will hear my plea if we are able to, in fact, hold our meet. But we actually loved having our meet in the summer. That was never my intention or idea to move it to a winter month. However, it does not really change the amount of participants that come. We've been very fortunate. I've been involved with USA Swimming for a long time, twenty-plus years, and I have a lot of great people out there that will come out and support our team, and they, a lot of the teams do come in February because winter months aren't easy to find a good meet. So, we have found a way to grow it, but it was really hard at first. We really took a hit those first few years because of the change that was forced upon us. So, the reason why we don't have a summer meet was never my doing.
Just a couple other questions concerning revenues that you talked about as you were just answering questions, because what you participate in is an individualized team sport.
It's it's both, really, yes.
It is, and my daughter participated in something different, but it was an individualized team sport. And I realize all the extremes that go through, and if you are serious about wanting to go to the next level, you find a way to practice. Practice just doesn't happen when the team is practicing.
That is correct.
And my daughter was out many times at six AM in the morning practicing, you know, with her and one of her other teammates. So, so I, trust me, I get the individualized. That's the reason I make that comment. I get what you're dealing with. The question that I had, because I was unaware, you mentioned dues and entry fees. What kind of dues do frack team members pay, if any?
Our monthly dues? So, we charge, it really depends on the group that they're in, and that pays for our coaches. I personally don't take any money. I'm solely volunteer with my position on frack. But they pay anywhere from sixty-five to eighty dollars per month to be there.
Okay, and then you mentioned the entry fees in your February meet is a huge fundraiser. What, you got approximately, you said eleven hundred people that come to that?
So, we have, we cap out at three hundred fifty swimmers, but they also bring along their families. And most families are a family of four or five, and they come and stay in local hotels and things like that. And so, those three hundred fifty swimmers, they pay an entry fee of four dollars per event. And then we take a portion of that, and we have to give it to who were governed under USA Swimming. And then the rest is for us, but we have expenses. We provide lunches to our coaches and officials. We we run a, we do a great job with hospitality. I know that's not related here, but we really do a good job. But that is our biggest fundraiser of the year. And back to what you said about it being an individualized sport, you are right. If if people want to be good and the pool is closed, they will find a way to do that, but it will be in another city because Gauche Aquatic Park is our only option for the particular competitive pool that we need.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Try it one more time.
Brad McIntyre, can you go to the podium, please? Brad, can you explain a little bit more details to the MOU that we have with the District Yuba City Unified?
Sure. So, we have a multi-use agreement, which ironically, we're in the middle of negotiating as well. But what we do is, it's called a multi-use agreement because with our youth sports programs utilizing a lot of their fields at the school sites, their gymnasiums, and then they use, like was mentioned earlier, River Valley High School, Yuba City High School, they use the pool. This, the proposed closure right now does not affect Yuba City Unified. And the Yuba City Unified typically comes in right around February first, it's when fall, winter sports starts, and they'll go until, let's, May, you know, it depends on how well they're doing in playoffs or swim meets, sections, subsections. And so, sometimes it's May, sometimes it's the middle of May.
So, the, so the students that attend River Valley High School or Yuba City High School on the swim team, I have candy in my mouth, swim team, I know, sorry, utilize the pool during, when it's closed or not, or?
No, well, I'm not sure I understand the question, but I think a majority of the competitive frack participants include River Valley and Yuba City High in the offseason for those that are not participating in other sports.
So, if the pool, they would still have access to the pool even when it's closed? Is that, that's my question?
No, they would not.
No, because it would still be needing some of that maintenance or what have you.
Yes, the heat.
The heat, audio. But this program, the, the River Valley and Yuba City High School starts in February.
Correct.
And so, if the pool is not available, where else could they swim besides ra the racket ball? Racket Club.
I don't have an answer for that. You know, just just to discuss the racket, the racket club issue. I initiated that meeting with Cindy Shatswell and Ann Gillan. Cindy is, Shatswell is also our, one of our Parks and Rec Commissioners. And so, in an attempt to give frack and our water aerobics and our lap swimmers an opportunity of choices, I guess, I went and and made that meeting on a Friday. I was, I left Sharon a message prior to, why, when Sharon got back, not to, not to come to the meeting, but just, we, I left a message with her the day before, so. She, when Sharon and I talked on Monday, and and the conversation was just to kind of find out if the racket club was even open to doing that, you know, and I was just gonna try to connect them. But but it was certainly upsetting to Sharon, and it was clearly her desire that I did not speak on behalf of frack for that second meeting, which was gonna be with Mr. Backus, who is Cindy's boss as well. So, at that meeting, and I had just gotten off the phone with Sharon, pretty much told Mr. Backus, I'm not speaking for behalf of frack. Then I was speaking for the programs, the recreation programs I just talked about earlier, which would be the lap swim and would be the water aerobics.
I I got you. So, how, I have gone swimming in the pool in Sutter. What is that pool like, like?
I have not been to that pool in Sutter.
Hey, Ben. How's that pool like over there in Sutter? Oh, Octo, oh, they closed it from October to April? Okay. Okay. All right, you answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Oh. Sure, come on up.
Um, I just wanted on the record to be clear that I did not have prior knowledge of a meeting with the Racket Club. Mr. McIntyre did call me on July eleventh, but there was no mention about a meeting with the Racket Club the following day. I I absolutely had no idea about that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we're gonna start with our public comment. We're gonna start off with Karen Cardasselli. And if Deborah Currie can be on board, be ready to speak next, please. Karen, you're up, please.
One, two.
So, for the audience purposes, there is a red light up here. So, if one of the speakers prior to you turns it off, and then the red light will be turned on. So, before you come up and speak, just make sure the red light's on. You know your light.
And like the mayor had mentioned before, it's gonna be three minutes, folks.
Oh, I can talk fast.
Thank you.
First of all, don't turn it on yet. I wanna say thank you for hearing us out. I really appreciate that. To take the time to have a special meeting is very much appreciated by the community and certainly by me. I've been swimming at the Gap. Now, I I won't go into the details of where I came from, what I did, how I know about Gap or any of that kind of stuff. Yeah, I was there when the redevelopment agencies closed down, and it was a bummer, okay? But now we're here. We have that beautiful jewel. What we thought about on the council at the time was that, how, how, don't we deserve something like this in our community? A jewel for us to use, for everybody to use, for public health, for fun, for everything. And that was one of the rationales as part of the redevelopment of Pluma Street and the town center and everything else. Gauche was part of that. As a member of the Yuba City Council, when the Gauche Park project was approved, I, as other council members and staff, looked at as a benefit to the whole community, a quality of life issue and a jewel for our community. It was never looked at as a way to make money for the City General Fund. No recreation program or facility can function without a subsidy from the city. Not many could afford the programs if the fees were to, that were fully costed. That's for sure. Seniors use the Gap, maintain and improve mobility and pain control. Adult swimmers use it for the health benefits and the mobility issues, and also just for fun. Kids learn to swim and be safe around the water, and yes, frack uses the pool and pays, as we saw, a nice tidy sum for that, for the local kids to practice their sport. I sincerely hope that any alternatives that we may have looked at or that were provided here will be seriously considered. It is, if there is enough money for the new equipment, the pickleball courts, the new park at Harder and Butte House Road, and also the park equipment that's gonna be going in at Happy Park, as I understand, which is a park that consists in Sutter County that just came into the city, and none of those residents paid one dime in impact fees for a park, where those of us in the, in the north of town paid impact fees for that park. So, thank you very much for listening.
All right, so now we have Deborah Currie, and if Mary Finch could queue up behind her, please.
Okay, so if it's red light, I can go?
Green means go here. One second.
My name is Deborah Currie. I've been a member of the Yuba Sutter community since nineteen sixty-nine. I've owned homes, paid paxes, raised my family in both counties. My children have participated in schools and sports mainly, but not exclusively in Yuba City. Now, it's my grandchildren who will benefit from amenities and programs offered to our youth. Today, we are facing an annual five-month closure of the only public pool in the vicinity that is open year-round. Doing so will effectively destroy the only competitive swim teams in the area and remove any potential opportunities for winter swimming. We've lost programs and pools in the past due to financial restraints during harder times. These are not harder times. In fact, we are told that the financial resources for Yuba City have never been better. So, what I don't understand, why cut here? Where is what would be spent to keep the pool open year-round going to go? What is more important than community and healthful programs? There are so many possibilities I can think of right off the bat that could bring in revenue to offset any costs incurred while keeping it open year-round, not to mention offering further opportunities to both adults and children in this community. Gap is it. No other public pool can remain open year-round as none are heated. We see every day how society is more aware of eating healthier. TV, schools, governments are constantly advocating for youth health and fitness. There is no other sport so gentle on joints or that works so many muscles simultaneously. It's darn hot in the summer, and most of our winter is mild enough to enjoy swimming in a heated pool. We have this gorgeous pool. What about synchronized swimming, water polo, diving teams? What about water safety, lifeguarding certifications, or lifesaving classes that could be offered at Gauche through the Red Cross? What about adult swim teams or clubs or even lessons? Swimming's a great muscle-building sport. Why aren't the football or baseball players swimming laps to build strength to endure and endurance without harming joints and bones? We have water aerobics for seniors, youth swimming. We have water aerobics for seniors, youth swimming lessons and open swim hours during the summer, that's a start. A facility like Gap should be breaking in the dough, there are programs out there. Again, I ask, where will the money go that would be siphoned off from Gap? Is it for something worth taking away from our youth and community in general? Is it for something of equal value, health and character building? Is it for something that other sources could be tapped for funding, like grants, donations, state or federal government, bonds, whatever? If there really is no other choice, can other sources be counted on or courted to help pay the costs of year-round operation? I've already named just a few of the potential programs that Gap could offer, all of which could bring in revenue, given management and promotion. As elected officials advocating for our youth and improving the resources for its citizenry is probably one of the most important and joyous responsibilities you have in making a positive impact on the community. Before taking anything away, please give yourselves more time to explore and take advantage of the opportunities of such a potential financial asset. Please reverse your decision to close the Gap during those winter months, and thank you for listening.
Alright, Mary Finch, I presume?
Yes.
Alright, and if Paula Gomes could please come up and queue up after her. Thank you, welcome Mary.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna just talk a little bit more about what the pool means to me and other adult swimmers. I live at 9255 Armstrong Road in Marysville, and I just want to say that I really love to swim. I love to swim year-round. I love to compete in masters swimming, and I've been competing for 57 years. I started when I was eight years old on the Orland Otters. Which was only summertime, but, um, I was very excited when the city had meetings to plan an, a, a new aquatic park with a competition pool. After many years of planning, I was there for the groundbreaking and the pin, opening ceremonies. I'm so proud of this fabulous facility, every time I swim there, I am grateful. It's such a joy to swim there. You may think the pool is not fully used in the wintertime, but, and expensive to run, the, but the pool is very well attended with at least three to four swimmers per lane, and I guess you saw the, the numbers up there, um, recently. The doors can't just be closed and not cost something to the city. Um, sure, there would be some money saved, but you still have to pay for maintenance, chemical costs, security, and upkeep needs to continue. One thing that we as swimmers do during the winter, when the sycamore trees drop their leaves and seed pods, the filters are overwhelmed by all the, um, plant debris. And at the end of workout, we go down, we, we clean the gutter drains, which often are plugged, so there is no water flowing through them, and I'm sure that's hard on the filter itself. Um, and some of us go down to the, down into the deep drains and, and pull the sycamore leaves out of there, too. Sorry. So some questions I have is, um, how, how will the maintenance, um, staff even clear those drains? Will they even know that they're plugged because they'll be covered by the pool covers, which is an important thing, but those don't keep the, the debris out of the pool itself? So, and I would just like to have you reconsider your, um, decision to close the pool for five months, because it's, it's really a great asset to the community, and people who come here to visit, they're just so amazed at what a wonderful facility we have, and it's really gonna be, um, a detriment to that facility to have it closed for five months. Thank you.
Alright, welcome, Paula Gomes.
Hi, good evening, um, first of all, thank you to all the councilmen, I'm sorry.
Brecko can please step up behind her, please. I have these in alphabetical, if you can get an idea when you're coming, but Michelle, please step up behind Paula, and, sorry, go ahead.
Once again, thank you for taking this opportunity to have this special meeting, um, thanks for the community for coming out. I'm gonna have a different, a little bit of a take for, for you especially. Um, so I am a parent of a FRAC swimmer. I'm not gonna go there. FRAC is a component of this, but bottom line, this is about the community. I'm not just a FRAC parent, I'm a citizen with Uba City. I am also a working professional in public safety for the past 26 years in the Uba Sutter area. I'm not talking on behalf of my department that I currently work for, but I just want to provide some expertise that I think Mr. Landon, Chief Lando, would probably appreciate just a little bit. So, my concern is, I know nothing about swimming, I'm learning through my son and Sharon and Shelby and now Claudia coming through, is the fact of where it's located and what we do as a community when during the offseason. The thing that we're talking about is offseason. All these are great stories here, are great, incredible stories about your children, but it's also about the community. We do a lot. I sit in the parking lot, and it's natural instinct for me to watch my back and see who walks in. Who walks in with your child? Who walks behind them, next to them, who's watching them? There's a few other people in law enforcement who have family in law enforcement as well. Closure for five months, you're not gonna have the community's help in watching that. I guarantee you with my experience, both as a dispatcher and now as a probation officer, you will have crime there. This will be harder for Mr. Landon to cover. He doesn't have the staff to cover it 24/7. I get that you want to think, hey, we don't want to take funds away from public safety, but the idea is also preventative, too. There will be syringes in the park. There will be people setting up gang fights in the park. It's not just the swimming pool, it's the park, too. It will happen, and as I sit in my car waiting for my son to get out of swim practice, I'm watching that. I teach my other parents the same thing. It's, it's a community effort altogether, and we take an oath, you took an oath, if I'm correct, you take an oath when you come in? I take an oath, 24/7, I serve the public. And I think our oath to the community, we're not here, as it's been stated before, to make a profit off this pool. That was not the effort. It was to bring a community together. If it means to bring a community together to prevent that one 13-year-old from joining the Nortonios or even the Serenios who aren't that far away from Gap, to meet at the Gap to have a fight, then we've served a purpose, even if we lose money. So there is a saying when you study, well, not saying, it's a term that you learn when you study the criminal justice system. I know that, Mary, you're aware of it, Mr. Landon, there's a couple of parents out here, it's called spirit of the law and letter of the law. So, there's times when we take our own discretion in the spirit of what's right, with the principle of what's right, and that's what we kind of have to do. So when you go back and you look at all these numbers, think about the long haul, because I think that that's what your intent was, if I remember correctly. And take that spirit, I think needs to play a little bit more heavy hand than on the letter and the number. So thank you for your time.
Michelle, I see Rocco queued up right there. Is there an issue with the, not that Paula was over time, but is there an issue with the timer? You found it? Alright, meaning you fixed it? Alright, alright, very good. Welcome, Michelle Greco.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, mine, well, my purpose here is just to speak a little bit about the word pride and pride in our community. In 1985, Rand McNally, in the places rated Almanac, rated Uba City as the worst place out of two, 329 other cities. Um, this is perhaps why as a child, growing up not too far away in Chico, California, I had only heard negative things about Uba City. If you would have asked me when I was young, I would never have guessed that I'd end up living here, yet I am proud to call Uba City my home. My husband and I moved here almost 15 years ago after working in education within the Uba Sutter community for about five years at that point. We were wanting to eliminate our long commute to work and to settle down and have children of our own. We thought this would be a great place to settle in and have our family. I've embraced this town, and I feel like over the last 15 years that I have been an advocate for our little community. Too often, I am asked how I ended up here or what happened, especially when I share that I have lived in other locations such as Santa Barbara, Del Mar, San Diego, Chico, and so on. Typically, the ones asking me this question, often with a somewhat judgmental undertone, are the locals of Uba City themselves. So the real question is, how can we continue to better our community, our health and our wellbeing and our overall pride in our area? Or more specifically, how is shutting down Gap going to better our community and make people happier to call Uba City home? As one of the FRAC swimmers mentioned last meeting, there was a USA Today article about the 25 worst cities in the United States to raise children. Much like the article from 1985, we all know that different things become determining factors in order to rate any city in such a list. I do think that as an imperative to reiterate that one of the four main factors assessed in this USA Today list was population with access to areas for exercise. We ranked in the lowest 10%, with only 36.6 of our population having access to areas for exercise. So how will closing another facility promoting community, health and exercise help this concerning lack of access? I'm gonna touch on an article that Sharon referenced earlier that was, uh, presented in focus of August 26th, 2008, about the opening of Gap. And it says here, "The value of the over 6 million facility far exceeds the boundaries of the Gap. The park, as Gap, is also a revenue generator for surrounding local businesses. Swim competitions and other events are bringing in tourist dollars that the city had not seen before. While the true impact of the park is still being measured, Gap is proving to be a model for smart growth. This facility brings a huge draw to the area. We've had people come as far as Chico, bringing in all these visitors provides us an opportunity to support our economic development, which is so important right now," says McIntyre. I know that I'm merely one person within my larger community, and I am up here today not only advocating what is best for my community, but what is for best, best for my own children. I would imagine that if any of you were told that the athletic facility for your own children would need to close as they were not pulling in enough money, that you would do everything within your power to communicate.
No, go ahead. Miss, Michelle, we were, I think we're having clock issues. She gets another minute, right? No? Oh, my bad, sorry.
I appreciate the intent.
Oh, yellow light was broken, okay, gotcha. Welcome, Rocco, and then after Rocco, we're gonna do, uh, Claudia Gilroy?
Okay, so I'm gonna be real brief, because I have a feeling you're gonna hear a lot of the same stuff over and over again tonight, but I, I just want to point out a few things. Um, the first one is, and I know the budget person is not here, but we talked a little bit ago, I heard somebody say that it saved 8,000 during the coldest month during shutdown, so I'm confused as to how five months would turn into 122,000 when one month was only 8,000, so that, that just doesn't make sense to me. I know I'm not the budget person, though I do work with budgets. The next thing is, investing in a pool and putting 16 million for the community is a beautiful thing. To shut it down over a small amount of, and I don't want to call it budget dust, because if I truly believed that we were losing 122,000, I don't think I could stand up here with a straight face and say, "The city council should subsidize that," because there are other costs and things in law enforcement that I know are important to the city. Um, I just, I still question that number, and I would love to see what goes into that 122,000 and understand that a little bit better. But in that, building something like this would be like me getting my daughter an amazing computer for Christmas and then not buying her a charging cord so that she can't use it. Like, that just doesn't make any sense to me as a community member either. Um, so I kind of, I, I question that a little bit as well. And then finally, I, I know from working in the public sector and working with people, the most important thing when we make a decision, especially a controversial decision, and, and you guys had to understand that in making this decision, there was gonna be upset. The first thing that we do and we always do is we consult the stakeholders. We talk to the people who use it, we get their input and feedback. That way, even if a decision doesn't go your way, at least you've been heard and you've had that opportunity, and I think today was a step towards that. But it's coming way too late to make any kind of changes. I, I can't make adjustment for my own kids or for anyone else, or to start setting up carpools or anything for the next year for them to be able to do that without any kind of input. And so if there really is a major loss like that going on, I would expect an ongoing conversation to occur with the stakeholders. But to shut it down with just a couple of weeks' notice and to say, "This is what we're doing at this point," that just seems unfair to the community that you represent. So I'm gonna leave it there and save time for everyone else, and I thank you guys for the opportunity tonight.
Paula, just to clarify, the 130 would be for the entire year, the, the proposed closure dates, the months, is a savings of 30,000. It starts out at 50. Yeah, that number's been, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna, we'll get to that, but it is, it is a $30,000 savings. Yeah, we, we now we're, now we're to the point, we need to get back to the podium again, but I tell you, we can, um, we can get Brad up there, too.
Yeah, so, and, and even with that, because I, again, I don't, it's about public health, and it's not about FRAC. I mean, I, I know we're all here representing FRAC, but it's about the community and everything else. If 30,000 is truly the total number we're talking about, not, not to call that inconsequential, but that's, that's budget dust in the size of the budget we're looking at, there's definitely options that could be considered to be able to look at raising those funds and other access or usage for that pool, so we'll leave it at that, thank you, guys.
If that's what, you could do that, that's fine. We're gonna get to it. Typically, we don't go back and forth for comment period, but I wanted to clarify that real quick, but, uh, we're gonna get to it here shortly. We want to listen to everybody first, though. Is Claudia close? How you doing, Claudia?
So Mayor, the, the, um, answer to the question was that, these are actual numbers, and the expenditures include, um, all of our programs, recreation programs, it includes, uh, all the maintenance, um, it includes one recreation aquatic supervisor, uh, it includes, encompasses all, all of our expenditures. The revenue obviously comes from the programs and from the contract with FRAC during this time. The, the projection of the, um, $8,000 was based on that one, um, example of when we closed it last year. These are real numbers, my projection, and so I, I don't know what to tell you, those are, those are real numbers that have been audited.
Did you have some?
I possibly can help clarify a little bit, uh, due to what I do for a living there, Mr. Mayor. The, the numbers up there are real. We, overall, over the course of year, operating, our net deficit is about 130,000, 120 to 130,000 a year. We do make revenue positive during the peak season, and we go reg, uh, nev- revenue negative during the offseason. The 30,000, Rocco, that you referred to wasn't what we're gonna be left with, that was the potential savings over the course of the five months, so that's where the 30 comes in, so we would still be looking at a net deficit of about 90,000 overall. Does that help clarify the question into 30,000?
That, that was me, and, and here we are back and forth with the corner again, however, um, we were not trying to break even, we were trying to lessen the impact on the community of, of the 120-ish, 130,000 dollars. So we were trying to save 50, ended up being 30, based on the plan we had, and we're gonna get to that, so we don't need to belabor it, but thank you. Alright, alright. I know. Go ahead, welcome, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Claudia Gilroy, and I am a coach for Feather River Aquatic Club. I'd first like to talk a little bit about my swimming career. I swim with FRAC for over a decade and had always secretly dreamed of the chance to swim at a Division One school. Although I wasn't the best swimmer at first, I had this passion for the sport that I knew could take me far. When I was little, I would actually put on my swim cap and goggles and wear them in the car everywhere we went. I refused to take them off. I'd get some pretty crazy looks from people passing by, but I didn't care. I was proud and so excited to be a part of FRAC and the swimming community. I'm now standing in front of you today as a student athlete graduate from the University of Nevada, Las Vegas. I received my bachelor's degree this May in psychology. By the time I was in my last year swimming for UNLV, I was a 4.9 student, receiving a scholarship that covered my entire tuition, in addition to a stipend of almost $1,000 per month. I don't know about you, but that is a lot of money to a college kid, and my parents will forever be grateful for, for what swimming provided for me. This opportunity that came out of our little community swim program has changed my life forever. I could have stayed in Vegas because being a rebel made me a great fan of the city, but I came back because I wanted to share the abundance of knowledge I've gained about the sport of swimming. I've been working with our older swimmers since I graduated, and I am enjoying sharing my passion for the sport. Giving back to this community is important to me. I showed up tonight in my UNL I showed up tonight in my UNLV warm-up suit in hopes of showing counsel and my swimmers that frac really does make dreams come true. I would like to end by giving a quote. I thought this quote was very clever, but also extremely true. It is, "Seven days of no swimming makes one week." The kind of week I'm talking about is spelled W-E-A-K. This could not be more accurate and makes me think about how detrimental it would truly be for our swimmers to be out of the pool for five months. If I had been unable to train for almost half a year, I certainly would have never been picked up by a Division One school. Please do not take this opportunity away from present and future swimmers in our community. Please reconsider your decision, and thank you for listening.
Jeremy, I presume? All right, and Shelby's probably pretty close, hopefully. There she is. All right, sir.
Hello. My name is Jeremy Gilroy. And I'm a Yuba City resident. I'm 14 years old, and swimming is a huge part of my life. Swimming gives me something to do besides playing video games, helps me to be healthy, and it makes me happy. Swimmers are smart, too. We take pride in getting good grades in school, and we are taught that academics should always come before athletics. I've tried soccer, basketball, and tennis. I like all of those things, but none of them can even come close to making me feel the way I do when I swim. Swimming helps me work out any stress from the day, and it leaves me feeling accomplished. And then there's my teammates. The people that I swim with every day are not just my teammates. They are my friends. They are my motivators. They are my heroes. Please do not take away such a positive environment from them. I'm one of those kids that have big dreams when it comes to swimming. When I was 10, I won the 50-yard butterfly at Junior Olympics. When I was 12, I was selected for Western Zones, which is a huge meet for those of you who may not know about our sport. Just a few weeks ago at Junior Olympics, I made finals and medaled in both the 200-meter butterfly and 200-meter breaststroke. I currently hold several team records, and all of these things have helped me gain self-confidence. Like I said, I do have big dreams. I have every intention of working hard every single day to get where I want to go. I want to go to a D1 school and possibly even attain an Olympic trial cut. I am well on my way to that D1 school, but I won't be if you close the pool for five months. Please don't take that away from me or any other frac swimmer that shares those same dreams. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right, and behind Shelby Gilroy, we have Cole. The pen died on you. Is it Lorton? All right, come on up. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Shelby Gilroy, and I think closing Gauchea Aquatic Park for five months out of the year is detrimental to the growth of this community. I have been the head coach for frac for the past 10 years and the head coach of River Valley High School Swim and Dive Team for the past nine. I am a graduate of UC Davis and currently work as a high school math teacher at River Valley. And I am also the lifeguard instructor at Gauchea Aquatic Park. I am quite vested in the youth of this community. Frac has been a part of this community since 1968. 1968, over 50 years, and here we are in danger of closing our program. Frac did a lot of good things for me. I joined when I was seven, and it instilled in me a sense of pride, discipline, and the ability to manage my time wisely. It also exposed me to lifetime experiences that I would not have had otherwise. Memories like these are what inspire me to give back and engrain the same sort of passion into our young athletes. I love coaching both frac and River Valley High School. A typical workday for me consists of 13 hours working with children. I see firsthand how joining an extracurricular activity boosts confidence levels, allows children to find something they love, and enables our youth to become the very best versions of themselves. Depriving them of this joy for nearly half a year will hinder their abilities to grow as athletes and, more importantly, as young adults. Many of our athletes will be forced to either join another swim team in a different community or quit the sport entirely and move on to something that is not as enjoyable for them. It was extremely disappointing to me to learn that a very small group of people would make such a large and important decision for our community, especially because none of us were given the opportunity to weigh in on the issue with our own thoughts. Have you ever spoken to the lifeguards who protect the participants at Gauchea Aquatic Park? The very people who are at risk of losing their job if the pool closes? If so, they would tell you that they undergo a strenuous, yet highly informational, 26-hour course that enables them to keep our community safe. These lifeguards would also tell you that their monthly in-service training requirements are necessary in keeping their skills at a test-ready level. It is this type of ongoing training that assisted our lifeguards in executing the proper skills during a major emergency at our facility on July 20th. Our guards handled this situation beautifully, but it is because of the ongoing training and experience. Without having in-service trainings for five months, our guard skills will no longer be maintained at a test-ready level. When the pool plans to reopen in February, additional training will need to be completed in order to ensure the safety of our guests. When I looked up the city of Yuba City's website, I found a piece that read, "Residents and visitors of Yuba City enjoy a wide variety of outdoor recreation and family-friendly venues including beautiful parks and a state-of-the-art aquatic center." How state-of-the-art will it be after sitting vacant for five months? That same website also claims that the city is proud of our community and its people. I beg you to back that statement here tonight. Be proud of our lifeguards, be proud of our seniors and our frac swimmers, back them and support our pool. Please help us to keep doing what we are doing. We are making a difference in people's lives, and that has to count for something. Thank you for hearing me out, and thank you for giving us the special meeting tonight.
Alex Mott, next. Welcome, sir.
Hello, my name is Cole Lorton. I'm 11 years old, and I'm a current member of Feather River Aquatic Club, most commonly known as frac. Thank you for letting me speak today with you about Gauchea Aquatic Park. I'd like to start with why this means something to me. Well, first of all, this is the one sport since I was five that I actually enjoy without having to have my best friend in it. Swimming is the only sport that I love out of all the other sports I tried. This team has impacted me greatly. It has made me stronger, faster, and has increased my endurance. Everyone on my team is kind and supportive. How can I continue my goal of reaching a Junior Olympic time if you close the pool? How do you know the next Michael Phelps isn't me or someone on my team? If frac closes, I would feel troubled, sad, confused, angry, and disappointed in the city council for doing this. I've seen pictures of what could happen to pools if not maintained. They get destroyed. I just don't understand why you'd do such a thing, especially to the hard-working lifeguards and coaches that got no warning whatsoever that they might have to get a new job. I've seen them work, and I can tell that to them, this is not just a job. To them, this is everything. Everyone knows that majority rules, and yet but two of you out of all five made such a big decision. How is that fair? The way I see it, technically speaking, this decision shouldn't have been made yet until you all vote. I'm thankful for your time, and I hope you realize how you're hurting the kids, especially since you named this month Parks and Recreation Month. Don't we count two? Please do what's right for the kids and reconsider your decision.
And forgive me if I mispronounce, but Senna Minshew is next? Am I mispronouncing? Welcome, Alex.
Hello. So I'm Alex Motta. I'm one of the employees at Gauchea Aquatic Park. I've been working there for the last six years, and I've had the pleasure of seeing a lot of these kids come through frac. And I'd just like to say something on their behalf and at the end, like to say something about some of the lifeguards and the employees that also work there. So the value of frac holds a lot in this community. I feel like it's invaluable. I mean, I've been witness to that, obviously, as I said, for the last six years. I've seen swimmers go off to college and become Division One swimmers. And having part of that college paid for, especially in a community such as ours, is magnificent. I've seen kids brought in to the family of frac and just change their total demeanor. I've seen kids earn a lot of the things that they've deserved to earn. I mean, they've gained a lot in discipline. They've gained a lot in just overall human kindness. I've seen it. As has been said before, the closure of the pool is gonna end frac. And a lot of these people, there's not a lot of places for them to go. There's people that are not gonna be able to make that commute to, say, Roseville or Sacramento that are going to have a place for them to actually swim and compete in events that is gonna make them better swimmers. So the availability of this pool means a lot, especially the family. Like, you see all these people in here. This is a family, obviously. I mean, we don't all have the same shirts for no reason, right? Everybody means a lot to everyone here, and taking away frac is gonna take away part of that family, for sure. Lastly, I'll talk about the lifeguards and the people that I've had the pleasure of working with over these last six years. If the off-season goes away, a lot of these people are not gonna have the job opportunities that they're going to have. I mean, the pool has been really good with being flexible with the schedules, especially the busy schedules of a high school student, especially a junior and senior about to go into some of the most important parts of their lives. Them having to find another job is obviously just another task that's gonna be put on that plate, and maybe they're not gonna be as flexible with those hours. And also, with the closure, the test-ready skill levels is a big thing. I was one of the people that was there during that incident, and a lot of these people acted on what would be like base instinct after doing all these trainings that I've been taking a hand of training them. And I couldn't be more proud of them for what they'd done. But I don't know if we could be able to provide that kind of care without the upkeep. And the chances of a returning guard coming back after having a full off-season and not working here is gonna be low. They'll probably find another job, right, because they're gonna need one? And the chances that they're gonna come back to this job after they've already established themselves somewhere else, I believe, would be very low. Thank you for hearing me out, and thank you for all for being here.
Next, we'll have Chris Morrison.
I'm Senna Minshew, also known as the Gladiator. Thank you so much.
I can see why.
Thank you for hosting this special session for us to talk about this. This is important. I'm a member of the Masters Program at the Gap. I still remember my first time getting in the pool in 2011, not being able to make it across the pool. And with the family that's standing back here and the Gap family, I'm now at the top of my age group coming out of swims at triathlon. It's amazing. So I'm a founding member and an officer of the board for the Yuba Sutter Tri Club. We started accepting memberships in 2012, and we are up to 77 members this year in this Yuba Sutter area. And we train year-round. The tri-season goes till December and usually starts up in March. So the proposed five-month closure would be a huge impact for the triathletes as winter is when we're in the pool exclusively. We can't visit our local lakes and rivers because it's just too cold, even with a wet suit. So we need to be in the pool, working on our weaknesses. And it's a key time to work on those weaknesses leading into the tri-season. If we're not in the pool in the winter, we're behind our competition during the season. Swimming is also great. You know, I've heard a lot of conversation about recovery and joints and everything. Ending up tri-season in December, fall is marathon season. It's good to get those athletes into the water to recover. So I really, I ask you to consider all the programs that this proposed closure will displace and vote to keep the pool open year-round. Thank you.
Following Mr. Morrison, we have Audrey Reese.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Morrison. I'm a new to your community. I moved here back in December. The military's having me travel around quite a bit. And I bring that only to tell you that I've been in pretty much every corner of the country now and have not seen anything like the Gap. It's a wonderful place. Seeing all these kids come up and speak, trust me, it's terrifying to be up here and talk to people. And you guys are inspiring, and this pool is doing that to your community. I've seen pools close. I've seen things like this, and it just seems to be the first step of a few to close it down. It seems like frac will leave if it closes. It'd be a shame. I was a swim team product myself. I'm now a part of the triathlon club with, you've now met the Gladiator. And it's just all great things. It seems like if you lose frac, my rough estimates of the cost would be $30,000 in revenue, which you're trying to save. So it seems pointless. I'll just wrap it up with, you guys have a beautiful thing. It's a pearl. Don't make a thing of the past. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Say probably your brother, Dalen's next, after you. Dalen? Dad, sorry. Older brother.
Good evening. My name is Audrey Reese, and I'm 11 years old. Today, we gather together to discuss the fate of our community pool. And I'm a part of the frac swim team. To an outsider, it may seem like an ordinary swim team. But I promise that if you look just a little bit closer, you might find a family. People of all backgrounds joined together to form one big happy environment that I've been lucky enough to be a part of for the past two years. No swim team could ever replace my frac family. And I will be very sad if it comes to us parting ways just so the city can save some money for a few months. And as my fellow teammates have said in the past, closing the pool can mean opening the facility up to things like vandalism, which could end up costing more to repair than it's worth, which could end up being the end of Gauchea Aquatic Park and all the community involved in it, with it. In conclusion, please find a way to keep our pool open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then Kobe, Chris PCO. Pen died on you, too. You're up next, sir.
Go ahead. Welcome. Thank you. My name is Dalen Reese. Audrey is my daughter. 12 years ago, when I was assigned to BL Air Force Base, we had many options for communities to live around the base. BL Airmen choose to live in Nevada County, Placer County, Yuba County, and we chose to live in Yuba City here in Sutter County. We chose to do so because it offers the diversity, education, city services, and recreational opportunities that we wanted for our kids. When I retired from the Air Force five years ago and transitioned to my current job in Oakland, we chose to remain here for the same reasons. With the daughter on the swim team, we appreciate having year-round swim program. With all due respect to the city of Sutter, the fact that they don't have a pool that's open year-round is one reason we don't live in Sutter. We should be expanding access to physical activities for our youth and not reducing them, and so I appreciate your consideration in that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is it Kobe or? Is he in the back? If he's in the restroom, let's have. Oh, here he comes, right here. Simmer, next.
Sorry, just give me one sec. Didn't realize I was going up next. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and also fellow Assembly members. My name is Kendall Waspisaw. I am currently a Special Olympic Global Messenger and a rising junior at St. Mary's College of California. Before, I received a Non-ESB award in 2017, which I was one of 24 in the whole nation. Before, I proclaimed, I was proclaimed by Stan Cleveland, who was sitting on the city council. Before, a story was featured on me on ABC 10 News. And lately, I received a gold medal in the 100 freestyle, 50 backstroke, 50 butterfly, and a silver in the 50 by, literally at the Northern California Special Olympic Summer Games. These three achievements make me hopeful for the 2020 National Special Olympic Summer Games. Before all these achievements, I was very good in, I was not very good in sports because I lacked the coordination and the stamina. Many kids made fun of me when I played sports. But when I started swimming with the Feather River Aquatic Club, mainly frac, I found a sport that I was good at. Swimming brought joy to my heart. Swimming brought joy to my heart and gave me confidence in life. My plea to, to you ca- to city council folks is all, all these good experiences started at Goshay Park. Please keep the pool open.
Thank you, sir. Kelly Swanson is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Simra Sohod and I'm eleven years old. I've been swimming at Gap for the past five years on a daily basis. Like many Yuba City swimmers, I started swimming lessons at Gap during the summer months and actually learned how to swim in a pool from frac coaches. Being on frac swim team has not only ignited my passion for swimming and other sports, it has also helped me organize my time in a productive manner. I have a set schedule for each day now and now, and know exactly how much time I have to play around after completing my homework and before getting ready to go to Gap for swimming. If Gap closes, I won't have this schedule and probably will lounge around on my phone. I am at a stage now, I'm becoming good at multiple swimming strokes and gaining confidence to compete at various swim meets. If Gap closes for six months out of the year, none of the frac team members will be in good condition for any swim meets and all local swimmers, including our two local high schools, will suffer greatly. We all have dreams of representing our hometown at high school and university level. So please do not close Gap and don't crush our dreams of becoming really good swimmers. Thank you for your time.
And after Ms. Swanson, we have Emma Tiara.
This crowd tonight is why I live in Yuba City. Uh, thanks for having this special meeting this evening. My name is Kelly Swanson, a Yuba City resident, and I enjoy swimming at Gap from June or July through October. I'm a pretty warm-weather person. Even though I belong to a fitness club with three pools. Gap fulfills many recreational needs in the community. The community park includes areas for active and passive play, gathering spaces and culture, cultural activities. The aquatic center provides much-needed water-related programs and meeting spaces for citizens. Goshay Aquatic Park has become a premier venue for the region, a centerpiece for the city's park and recreation program. It reflects the wonderful river context that is Yuba City, demonstrates a simple, passive, sustainable design approach, and also a strong commitment by the city for passive and active recreational leisure and for decades to come. This description, something for which Sutter County and Yuba City should be proud, was written by the Aquatics International staff and is posted on the aquaticsinternational.com website. How do we keep Gap open all year? Is grant money available, for example, from the Sutter County Children and Families Commission? There's grant open right now for that? Uh, community sponsorships? Can businesses adopt a lane? Have solar structures? I guess we now have solar structures. I didn't know that. Uh, have solar structures like we've seen at New Earth been constru- considered for shade structures over the picnic bencher, benches and bleachers? As a former teacher, having end-of-the-year school parties at Gap was something my students look forward to. Maybe reduced-rate school outings could be offered in August, September, and into October. I say reduce rates to draw teachers out of their classrooms at that busy time of year. But a day at the pool could be a great way to bring a class together. Thanks for all the work you do and for providing time for the community to share our ideas and concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. And after Emma Tiara, we have Ryan Van Balkenberg, our letter writer. Go right ahead.
Hi, I'm Emma Tiara and I, uh, and I'm eleven years old. Frac means the world to me. It's my heart, life and soul. If I didn't have swim, I'd have to do many of the other sports I used to do, but I quit for swim. This team's impacted my life so much. I've met wonderful friends and I, there are fantastic coaches. Even the lifeguards are nice to everyone. I have found my passion and I wouldn't want to do anything else. I've been swimming at Gap for two years now and when you first go there, you never want to leave. And if it closed, I would lose a place I consider my second home. Many people have, would be devastated if Gap closed, closed, including me. So please don't shut it down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Following Mr. Van Balkenberg, we have Candace Philip and Don, Pando.
My name is Ryan Van Balkenberg. I'm fifteen years old. I've been a part of frac since I was five years old and I've been swimming with frac year-round for the past four years. I also swim for River Valley High School. Like most little kids, I tried many other sports, but the one sport I fell in love with was swimming. My family was so happy. We had a stable year-round swim team with great coaches in Yuba City. I found not just the team here, but a family. Sharon and Shelby Guillory have looked out for me since I first tried out ten years ago. They helped me gain confidence, taught me to persevere, and they've been my mentors and role models for most of my life. This opportunity to have my voice heard is important, but I'm afraid it might have come too late. We had no voice in your decision and no forewarning. We would have to fight to keep such an important part of our lives. I'm very sad to hear you, you still plan to close Goshay Aquatic Park for five months out of the year, depriving all of us on frac of being together as a team and eliminating a healthy, enjoyable outlet. To go without seeing my frac family for nearly half a year is heartbreaking. This is a unique sport and there are no other options like it. Many of us have devoted years to it and have goals to continue swimming beyond high school. Your proposed shutdown puts our team in such financial jeopardy that we may lose frac and the opportunity to pursue those dreams forever. The shutdown negatively affects my high school team as well. As you know, RV and YC high schools don't have pools on our campuses. Just as football players practice on real football fields with regulation equipment months before their season begins, we swimmers need a regulation-sized pool to use before our season begins. We can't use some three-and-a-half-foot-deep pool at the racket club to practice. That's not helpful. It's dangerous. Why tell us we can practice at a facility that's unsafe and unusable for competitive swimming? If we cannot practice, we cannot win. And winning creates a sense of pride in our teams, our schools and our city. Pride in Yuba City is desperately needed. It is clear you have no viable solution for the problems you will create with Goshay's closure. The only other option is for all of us to drive at least forty-five minutes to another swim team. Many of us can't do that. But the bigger issue is we shouldn't have to travel to another town since we have been, we have working facilities right here in Yuba City. Even if we could spend four or more hours in evening traveling and practicing, do you, the city council, want all of us spending our time and money in other cities? The point of city planning and development is to make Yuba City desirable enough that we don't have to spend our time and money outside of it. You say you want to save money, but this isn't the way to do it. Other cities can figure out how to keep their facilities open year-round. And I would hope this city council could budget well enough to do the same thing. Gap is a public work for the people and not for profit. And besides, aren't we, the children and families of Yuba City, worth the investment?
And after Candace is John Buckland.
Thank you. Mayor Sean Harris and Yuba City Council. This evening I stand here with a great group of people that are here on behalf of our children and senior citizens. Please do not close Goshay Aquatic Pool. As a grandmother of a child that could not embrace, excuse me, local school sports, we search for an activity that would get her self-esteem and a purpose. My daughter enrolled my granddaughter into the frac program that Gap provides and is, and it has been absolutely amazing to see my granddaughter's transformation in frac program. As she has excelled in her confidence, with the change in her confidence, her school academics has improved with straight A's. Sharon and the staff is committed to this program to successfully see frac children go forward in this program. I understand your concern for the city budget, but Gap is not the program to discontinue. I know many of you on this board have children, grandchildren, a family and friends that utilize Gap. Some of you that sit here have your children active in many sports. And I am certain you as parents, grandparents have been proud to see them complete, compete and excel. If the programs that your children are involved in were to be taken away, I am certain all of you would be devastated and it would be you standing with all of us here now. So I ask all of you to please not let our children and our senior citizens down in this community. Please keep Gap open. Thank you for your time.
Batting cleanup, Mr. Buckland.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, council members, citizens, members of frac. Um, everyone that has enjoyed or even thought about, uh, others that enjoy the Gap facility. Um, I am here to, to tell you that it is and has been a worthwhile investment that was made years ago with commitment over a period of time that shouldn't be measured by dollars, lack of dollars. None of our recreation programs, none of them in a totality make money. Look at Hillcrest Park. Look at Regency Park. Look at every park that we have. They all cost money. Blackburn Tally, big repairs that went on down there for lighting. They all cost money. Every facility we have, police department, it costs money. The city's not in the business of making money. It's your city. It's your dollars. You are the investor in this city. How do we measure success? It's not by dollars. It's by a thousandth, a hundredth off of the clock once they enter the tank and they go swimming. It's that person that gets some freedom in mobility for the use of that facility. We can expand those programs here. Butchy's Pool closed down. Have we even encouraged the use of that through grant funds to build a augment and, and supplement the cost of operation of that facility? No, we haven't. And why haven't we? Well, we were busy. This city's been busy. It's been busy growing and building. Promises that would have been made by, uh, council members for, you know, unions, associations, for employees, for pay. We're trying to shave money out of, and carve it out of small amounts. Let me tell you that, that the Gap came on probably years too late. I was a kind of a, a coach. I used to drive a swimmer back in the seventies away from Yuba City three days a week. He was an aspiring four-hundred IM swimmer. He had to go to Woodland to build a swim. He had, he worked out there on three days out of the week. He couldn't practice here. His senior year in high school, he moved to Coronado. He was selected for the US Olympic team in the four-hundred IM. He was an amazing swimmer. We wouldn't, had we not boycotted the Olympics in nineteen eighty over in Moscow, he wouldn't have represented Yuba City. We didn't have the facilities. He would have been spotted as a competitor from Coronado, out of that swim stable. This is a remarkable facility. We need to continue to use it. We need to continue to have pride in that and we need to continue to fund it.
All right, that's the last speaker card I have. Does anybody care to speak that did not happen to fill out a card? Feel free if you would like to. Okay. I will bring it back to council for comments.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
First, um, I'd like to reacknowledge Karen Cardasselli for her foresight and those of the other members of the council that brought the Gap to us. It is truly a jewel for the community. And, uh, I think once again, thank you for, uh, for bringing that to us. But it was a good decision and thank you for that. I also want to acknowledge all the participants here tonight. Often we're in here and there's maybe a handful of people. You guys care about what's going on in your community. And, uh, you know, that, that's important to me as your elected representative. Secondly, I think, you know, the public participation in a process such as, as running the city is super important. And I want to acknowledge and apologize for the fact that, uh, I would think we let you down. Um, we're trying to make that right tonight. I again acknowledge the mayor for, uh, holding this special meeting. But, uh, clearly we didn't meet your expectations for communication. And, uh, you have my solemn word that that won't happen again. Uh, I hope that, uh, I hope that you'll be able to regain the trust in us to have public participation. To the lifeguards, I spent a lot of years taking care of people. Those of you who are here tonight that tried to take care of that person, uh, as the mayor stated earlier, you know, tremendous amount of respect. And as he mentioned, you know, there are, there is help. If you find yourselves struggling with, with what happened there, please reach out to us. The Gap is a regional facility and as a regional facility, the city of Yuba City takes the greatest burden. Um, I'm sure there are people here who spoke tonight from other places besides the city of Yuba City. And when the, when the facility was opened, uh, it was known that it was going to be a regional facility. Uh, much like many of our recreation programs are the region's recreation programs. I don't know for a fact, but I don't think that Marysville runs a softball program anymore. I certainly don't know what, uh, what else they do. So Yuba City takes the burden and is the leader in, in, uh, offering recreational programs. I, I appreciate the fact that frac is here. Um, well, I'd like to have the T-shirt concession. Somebody, somebody did well with that. But in all seriousness, this is more than just. Sure, yeah, I'll wear. Um, this is more than just frac. I, I don't mean to disrespect frac, but, um, there are the, uh, the triathletes, there are the, the others that take advantage of our program and that has to be factored into the decision to keep it, keep this, the, uh, pool open. I understand the value of activities of all ages. A matter of fact, my son was a lifeguard at Gap for, for a short period of time. Um, I do want to take a moment and I, I hope you understand when I say this, this isn't meant to put the burden on frac. But I heard several times tonight that financial resources in the city have never been better. Allow me to tell you that even though revenues might be up, expenditures are up. Uh, to, to, to characterize that this city is, uh, in financial, trouble is not true, but it's certainly not in any way, shape or form better than ever. We have a lot of things that we take into consideration, uh, and, and this was one of those decisions. The, the final thing that I want to, to convey is budgets and budgeting is tough. I've sat as a department head, running a fire department here for, for fourteen of my thirty years. And now I'm sitting up here trying to make decisions that are right for the community and right for the city and the services we provide. I think that we, we owe it to talk about, uh, as we did tonight, take your input and also try to find solutions to try to keep the Gap open for as long as we can possibly keep it open. I look forward to coming up as problem solvers. I think this council has that commitment and looking for solutions that will lead to the ability to keep the, the Gap open year-round. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Anybody else?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, first of all, thank you all for being here tonight. Um, Councilman Moon Garden well said. Um, there was an element that this council did let, uh, let the city down. And, uh, hopefully we can rebuild that trust and that, uh, partnership over time because, um, one of the thing we set, things we set out with and from the beginning is making sure that the community had a voice and was heard because we had heard that over the years that that voice had been silenced. And we wanted to make sure it was still there. And, uh, in this process, um, a lot of us were caught off guard. Even five of us sitting here at this dais was a little caught off guard as well. So, uh, mayor, thank you for, uh, taking care of the water there and then, uh, thank you for having this tonight. So I want to get back to a couple of things real quick. Um, first of all, Mayor Cardasselli, uh, thank you for your vision. First of all, Mayor Carteselli, thank you for your vision again years ago. This aquatic park is a jewel of the city, no doubt. It was, but it started a long time ago. And unfortunately, at this, no ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I think I'm about to get a history lesson, guys. But with that, again, I want to say thank you. But along those same lines, when things started changing and the budget started looking as they did, even back in '08, costs kept going up, and these discussions really should have started way back then to figure out what could be done with our parks and wrecks and community services. I want to say thank you to the young men and women that spoke tonight. You guys have nerves of steel, because it takes a lot to get up in front of people, and it takes a lot to get up in front of five people who you have the impression that we're going to either save your world or collapse your world at the end of tonight, and that takes guts, so kudos to you guys. You guys did a great job. Our master swimmers, all up there in the corner, thank you, guys. You guys embrace community. Things that I wrote down here was the fact that you guys took time to volunteer and not just use the pool. Thank you. That's what community is about. That's what our community is about, that's what makes our community special. And that gets back to really what the discussion should be tonight, and it's about community. Again, as my fellow council member says, no disrespect, but it's really not about our Feather River Aquatic Club, because you are just part of the community. This decision tonight is about community. And we have this tremendous asset that's sitting there that has ultimately been underutilized since its opening. Things that we need to start looking at is how can we offer more services down there? The losses that go on at Gap, we're not looking to redirect those by any means into any other mechanism within the cities, within the city. But you have to realize that that $130,000 that benefits the people that just use Gap takes away from the very essence of the things that I've heard every one of you talk about at your core, about how important exercise is, how important it is for youth to have something, how important it is for seniors to be able to exercise, how important it is for all the other services. The kids that do not want to be in the pool are just as important as you. And we have a duty and a responsibility to them. And the $130,000 loss, that comes into play with less services that can be provided. The big part of the budgetary process that has to be understood is you cannot balance ongoing expenses with one-time money. That is a, that's recipe for financial disaster. These are true quality of life issues here, but it's a quality of life issue for everyone that calls Uba City home. So in my opinion, we need to figure out a way to say yes, and that's what this council has really strived for. Is we're not just a council to sit back and go, no, it's not going to happen, and continue. It's, we need to think outside of the box. I heard in the presentation earlier that many things that seem to contradict itself, and I, just from my business mind, I was sitting here going, it was almost whimsical, because we can't run the city as a business. But amazingly, we talk about things like offering more programs, underutilization of assets. When you get down to the nuts and bolts of it, that's the starts of a business plan. You know, we can't run it like a business, but we have to start utilizing the assets to where we can provide more services. Things that I can see happening with that money that's saved potentially. And again, hear me first of all, we got to find a way to keep it open, okay? We have to find a way, okay? What that's going to look like, we're going to have to figure that out. But when I start looking at savings of $30,000 or $90,000, whatever those numbers are going to end up being, I see more opportunity. We could have, there's a wonderful lawn area down at Gap. You could have exercise classes for those that don't want to be in the pool, on the lawn. During the winter months, you could take those recreation rooms that's used for parties, you could have exercise classes or something in there as well. There's a ton of opportunities that can be utilized. It's not just about what goes on in the water, it's what goes on at that facility, and that facility has a whole lot more to offer. And with that, I've sat back for the last week and really tried to figure out a way to yes. And, you know, I look at the proposals that were brought forward tonight by the committee from FRAC, or the two representatives of FRAC. And, you know, it talks about, you know, direct the new city manager to start contract negotiations. Why do we have to wait till September, okay? We can, we can look at that. Secondly, I really think that, Mr. Mayor, what we need to do is look at our program fees as a whole. We have to find a path that is fair and equitable to everyone. We've got the school system using the pool, we've got FRAC using the pool, we've got the senior swimmers, we got the triathlons, triathletes. I know I just butchered that, but you guys, where did the Gladiator go? She was up there. That's it. Mr. Mayor, can I, Mr., Mr. Mayor, I'm going to need a ride home tonight, I think. But we need, we need to look at something, we need to look at something that is fair and equitable for everyone. Because quite honestly, Mayor, you should be paying the same type of fee that our seniors should be paying, that the triathlete should be paying, that the school should be paying, that FRAC should be paying. It should be fair and equitable to everyone. And if we can come up with some kind of solution along those lines, we can create a facility that's even better than what we have today, and offer more for our community. And, and again, FRAC, no disrespect, but you are just part of our community. You're a loud voice, we've heard it the last two weeks. But you are part of our community, we're glad you're here. But we need to offer so much more down there. So my suggestion and everything I've come up with, Mr. Mayor, is let's take a look at how our fees are based, what other services we could possibly offer at Gashay Aquatic Park. And let's go ahead and try to facilitate as much as we can with a lease agreement, because that's what the FRAC is, is a leasing of our facilities. And see if there's some way that we can get to yes, that can come back before this council. And, you know, rethink it. You know, who says we have to stay inside of the same governmental box that we've been in for fifty years? That's, that's what we try to do, is think outside of the box. So Mr. McIntyre is here with us, you don't have to go to the podium. But the things that we're asking, I'm sure that you can appreciate what the council is asking, and you and your team, along with our city manager, can think outside of the box. And let's see what we can come up with in a few weeks. That would, that would be my suggestion. Because as long as it's fair, it's equitable, and we can close that gap any at all, that is more services that we can provide to more of our community. So, and that's my suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, through the mayor. Much of what I was going to say has been said by the two council members. And I don't want to belabor the conversation further. But I do want to point, I want to speak from the heart of what I sense in our community. And that I sense that in this community, we really value each other. We really value the family that you have formed in FRAC. And one of the things that I have learned as a council member is that we work really hard to try to align five different views at one common area. And one common area that we always agree on is the quality of life of our community. And so with that, Gashay Park is part of what we offer to the community to access recreation, a common place that people will feel safe to utilize. And many of you have used it for many reasons, personal health, recreation, or taking your children there. And I thank you for doing that. I thank you for being so committed and involved and willingness to share your thoughts and ideas with us. I do agree that we need to find a way to come to an answer that we can all agree to. And that answer is closer to, yes, how do we get Gashay Park to be accessed by a larger group of diverse community? And I support that 100%, that we have a community that everyone, and soon as my physical therapy is done, I'm going to be able to go swimming. I haven't been able to because of that reason. But I say to you that there's things that are really, I've learned from you. I've learned that there are great other opportunities that, I'm hoping, our executive team, Brad, that we look at some additional programming offerings that we haven't considered in the past. To expand some of the programming that way that other community members might be interested in attending or utilizing Gap. The other thing that I learned is that how, when we decide on other future fundings, there were some really cool solutions that, I think it was Kelly, right? Kelly gave some really cool solutions about how can we look at other grants to look at for some funding resources, right? I really liked the idea, how about the community business sharing in, in the vision, right, with our Gap? What a cool idea of you saying, adopt the lane. When we did the Pickable, Pickable, that is, am I saying that right? Pickable, that, yeah, English is my second language. So that, that was truly a partnership with the Rotary, with Uba City Unified, and with the city. So it was a partnership that all of us pitched in a little bit to make that. And, and that, that is going to be utilized by Gray Avenue Kids throughout the year. So students, many students are going to be using that. And so, and also you talked about maybe some potentially reducing rates. I mean, those are all really good solutions. As, it's interesting that once I was elected, it seemed like people, or I don't know, like folks really thought, well, you should have all the great ideas. And to be honest, I don't feel like I can always have all the great ideas myself and finding solutions. So I ask you to please, if you have additional ones that we missed, of potentially really help increase the access of Gashay Park, I'm asking you to please give me some additional solutions on how we can do this. And I thank you for making all the time and the PowerPoint, I know it was a lot of work. And for the folks, the young men and women who have been working for the city for many years and taking care of people, I thank you for your time and what you've done. So I, I want to come to an answer of, yes, let's keep this going and let's keep it open. I just want to make sure that we have some other options in programming and expanding. So help me out, folks, how can we do this? That's all I ask you. Thank you.
Through the mayor. First of all, I want to thank all you folks for being here tonight. You guys could all be home, having dinner, watching TV, swimming and training, huh? Instead of being here tonight with us. Second of all, I'd like to apologize to all you folks for not paying better attention to the budget when it was presented to us back in June. For sure next year, I'm going to make sure I pay better attention, watch it over like a fine-toothed comb.
You'll be in the room.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I didn't pay attention, I apologize for that. The situation is, is we're talking cures for next year, or, and we need a cure within thirty days, because within thirty days is September 1st. And that's the presentation that was made a couple of weeks ago. We have a wonderful staff, we have a great E-team here. I'm sure that they can find some solutions that can bring this forward to us. That could, we can nip this in the bud, and hopefully you can have that swim meet in February. You folks can all still be in the pool throughout the year. And I have a great council on both sides of me. I can only speak for myself, but for myself, it's a yes, and you are going to have that swim meet, and we are going to keep it open all year. And that's all I got to say for myself, thank you.
Extra large. I'll get it, I'll get it to you. Yeah, I'll claim that up at 700. He prefers snaps and the crotch buttons up, not the butt. Yeah. God, I thought it was a little more funny than that. That's a nice one. All right, here we are. You know, we got here today because of a oversight or underestimation during the budget process. And here we are, but I tell you what, yes, we apologize for that, I certainly do once again. But if there's going to be positive come out of that, I think you folks have all proven that. Look at, look at what you've rallied around yourself, you've had to come together as a community, as a group. And it's really impressive, and this is what this process is all about. And it's great, and I want to go back to also acknowledge Mayor Carteselli, thank you for being here, thank you for your vision, your foresight that opened the Gap in the first place and the role you played in that, that's awesome, it really is a gem of our community, it really is, and thank you for that. The young people who spoke today, you wouldn't have had an opportunity to speak in front of the city council, so your parents are taking pictures of you and everything, you preparing such an eloquent approach and the points that you've made. That was, I think it's a very good experience for you, no matter how this works out, very good experience for you, and I respect you for that, you did a wonderful job, it was great. And so, you know, although our messaging definitely could have been much better in this decision that was made, completely agree. We are, we are here now, we're discussing it, you folk, and I want you to know that we hear you. We hear you. Not only that, we agree with you. Because it's a wonderful program, it's a wonderful facility. We have opportunities to expand the programming there, as everyone has said. And some folks in the audience have spoken, said that they're open to new ideas to kind of, no pun intended, close the gap between what we're earning and what we're making. But while it is true, you know, we're talking budgets and everything, and it's true, it's much, much, much more complicated than what's up here in a PowerPoint slide. It's, there's so much more at work there in the decisions we have to make, and funding sources, and what's allocated and what's not, what you can use, what you can't, grant applications, matching funds, I can go on and on. So we're trying to inform you about that. But I tell you what, in this process, you folks have turned it around and informed us. Because it wasn't as simple as a simple number, there's much more at work here. And so you know what? I don't think we're just interested in keeping this open, I think we're committed, we really are. Without, you know, we're here to make a motion out to proceed forward. We've talked about bring, bring new ideas forth, think about things outside the box. You folks give us ideas, staff give us ideas. We can, we can, we can talk about that for a long time, but I think it's important that we have a plan in place with a date in mind. All right, you have to have the goal and you have the date, it has to be measurable and obtainable. So my, my recommendation is going to be, in fact, I'll just make it. I want to, first of all, I want to, first of all, I want to be clear, there's not going to be a door locked at the Gap on September first. And that's thanks to all of you. That's thanks to all of you for being here tonight and communicating with us, all right? So, we made a mistake. We made a faux pas in the beginning, but here you are, and here we are, okay? September one, no door is going to be locked. I want to direct staff, conduct a fee study, reexamine of all of our fees, as mentioned before by Councilmember Shaw. Make sure they're contemporary and appropriate. Immediately begin updating our contract with the Feather River Aquatic Club. Our hope, our hope or our plan is to do everything we can on the city side as we, the word isn't negotiate, but as we discuss the, the new contract, that we do that, we do so as soon as possible. I would also like to have the city develop some sort of a suspense system in place. So any contracts, not just Frac, but any contract, does not go expired for an extended amount of time. So we have something we can, let us know ahead of time so we can work on beginning to renegotiate early before it expires because we have some liability that opens up before it expires. Also evaluate adding programming in offseason to increase revenues. And update, hopefully, complete all of these things within three weeks. It'd be August nineteenth, plenty of time for our next council meeting on August twentieth, ideally. Is that too soon?
I'm going to have to ask for Mr. McIntyre to go up to the podium, please.
That might be a tough order. I, I love the idea. Completely agree with the concept. I, as I look to Ann, we, it'd probably help us to get through the public swim. When school starts, then we're open on weekends through August. So I would imagine we can get it done. I just don't know that fast.
Okay. Can we have an update on August twentieth?
We could, we'll certainly give you an update on the Frac contract. I think we can start that immediately. I'll reach out tomorrow.
All right.
And we can certainly do the fees as far as comparables to what we do, can bring that at that time as well.
See, comparables and also filter that through what our actual costs are specific to our, our facility? You, you're talking comparables to other facilities?
Compare, as far as you're talking about fee structures as it relates to programs, I would assume. Yeah, so that's compared to other programs.
Okay, so I think that summarizes it. A fee study, reexamining for our fee structure, immediately begin updating contract with Frac, hopefully complete that. Do everything we can on our, our side to facilitate the contract. Develop a suspense system so expiration doesn't happen again. Explore programming options and update by our meeting on August twentieth. And most importantly, once again, we're not locking the door on September first. All right? That, now wait a minute. This is a council. It's not just me up here talking. That would be, I'm just gonna go ahead and say that's my motion. I would love to have a second. It's not typical that the mayor would do that, but.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye, 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 aye.
We're unanimous. Thank you very much. Karen, if you saw me in a Speedo, you wouldn't be able to see the Speedo, but my belly hangs too far. Wonderful. So really, it is quality of life, you guys, and it's community, and it's our, and it's the system that we have here. I realize there's some frustrations that, that we caused, or I caused. But guess what? We came through it in the end together, and I think we're gonna be all the better for it, all right? So thank you very much for coming tonight. And we're going to adjourn to closed session.